Pardons to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this school board meeting of a dependent school district by meeting board of order. Establish your form?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Limkey.
Here.
Missy Hermes is here, Stephen Biggessa.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Could I get a motion to approve our agenda tonight?
So moved.
One second. One second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It was opposed, saying it. And this approved, okay. We have a resolution, I am acknowledging, thank you to Jamie Will for her success in leading the Kids' Heart Challenge at McKinley School and raising over eighty-five hundred dollars for the American Heart Association. And thank you to Steve Olson for leading the Kids' Heart Challenge at Cleveland Elementary and raising ten thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars to help millions of Americans through increased awareness of cardiovascular disease, life-saving scientific research, and critically needed education efforts. And then thank you to Mark Ring and Deisha Stiles-Bring for their two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation to the Fergus Falls High School Quorum Program. Could someone offer this resolution and report's adoption?
I'll do that, I'll offer that resolution and report's adoption.
One second there.
One second. Let's see, will you take all?
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Biggessa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. And tonight we have a variety of reports, but we'll start out with Melissa Amundsen from Otter Preschool. And Amelia, we kind of do it together.
Yes, well, I know Melissa, we all know this, but I just want to give a little bit of a synopsis of the process Melissa and I had over the course of this school year. I first met with Melissa back in the fall to discuss the curriculum review process. This is the first time that the Otter Preschool has been a part of the formal curriculum review cycle. So kind of I went way back in the fall just to kind of establish a process. Together we reviewed each of the domains of the Early Childhood Indicators of Progress, also known as ESIPS. Knowing the district's emphasis on literacy as well as the Read Well by Third Grade Initiative, we decided that a curriculum work program in the area of language and literacy would probably be the most beneficial. I met with Melissa and the preschool teachers at Lincoln in the fall to provide an overview of the curriculum review cycle. From there, Melissa worked with her staff to evaluate the resources they currently have, explore a variety of other programs, and work to find a program that would best fit theirs and their students' needs. Upon choosing a curriculum, that program was presented and approved by the Early Childhood Advisory Board in January and the DACTRAC Committee last week, and all of those things have now led us here. So with that being said, I will just let Melissa give you the details of the proposal.
Thank you. Good evening, Melissa Amundsen, I'm the Early Childhood Education Administrator for Fergus Falls Lincoln School. And as Amelia mentioned, I'm just going to give a brief overview of our curriculum adoption proposal. As Amelia mentioned, this is our first official district curriculum review and adoption for curriculum in our early childhood program. But don't let that fool you, we have had a curriculum prior to this. In two thousand and fifteen, just a brief history, the district's Early Childhood's Otter Preschool Program started to participate in a quality program within the state of Minnesota called Parent Aware. Parent Aware is a quality rating system and in which to receive a full four-star, the highest rating in the program, you also had to ensure that you followed certain criteria and standards, two of which being having an adopted curriculum as well as an assessment. So since two thousand and fifteen, the program has had a quote-unquote "official curriculum", but had never gone through the official district adoption review cycle. In discussion with Superintendent Drake along with some of our teachers and the district goals, the curriculum director last year really talked about the importance of having early childhood included in the process, as Amelia mentioned, with the high emphasis on the language and literacy and our kindergarten prepared students. So currently, we are serving one hundred and forty-six students in our Otter Preschool Program. We have other programs under our umbrella, but this curriculum will be directly focused on our early childhood. So there's the breakdown of our one hundred and forty-six students. We have fifty-six three-year-olds, seventy-four four-year-olds, and sixteen five-year-olds. When we began the process, we really did a deep dive and thought about considerations, needs, and the importance of including our early childhood philosophy and foundation of early childhood. We did a thorough brainstorming of the things that we felt were really important as we moved through the process, all while keeping the district's goals in mind. And so those are listed up here, and you can read some of those, but I'll point out a couple of the ones that we feel are the most important, of course developmentally appropriate, and that it's hands-on and interactive with manipulatives in play. So if you've been in an early childhood Otter Preschool classroom, or you've seen children playing, that is how they are learning in our environment. The NAYC there on the side, I bolded the importance that they emphasize the curriculum having strength-based, play-based approach to joyful, engaged learning. And we all feel that that extra word of joyful, it just really kind of sums up walking into an early childhood classroom. Some of the other pieces, of course, were more teacher-focused, just the ease of being able to use it, the ability to have pieces available, meaning manipulatives or those sets for each additional classroom. With the strong emphasis on project-based learning, we wanted to ensure that our curriculum would allow for those opportunities in the classrooms to fulfill that piece of the district's goals, and of course differentiation and adaptations for three, four, and five-year-olds, with the ability to also help and support those who may be even more advanced as that five-year-old. Amelia kind of went through the review process, or kind of mentioned how we started out. So we began in October, and we met monthly and twice during a couple of months with our staff. We really evaluated what our current curriculums offered, we collected samples, narrowed those down, implemented some of the pieces to try them out in the classrooms, discussed, lots of discussion, lots of vibrant discussion amongst teaching staff, kind of narrowing that down to our final choice. We did present it, as Amelia mentioned, at the advisory board and the DACTRAC, and now here, sharing it with you. So we started with eight early childhood curriculums, and our initial conversations with Amelia surrounded language and literacy and the importance of that. And in early childhood, we wholeheartedly believe that that is incredibly important area to focus on, but in early childhood, we can't often teach things in isolation, they need to be taught as a whole-child approach. And so as we moved through the process, we started to gravitate more to curriculums that weren't a standalone curriculum in just language and literacy, but a whole-child approach with the ability to encompass multiple areas and developmental domains. So we started with eight, we narrowed those to four, we really dove deeper into those four, narrowed it down to our final two, in which we did finally come to kind of a consensus that our proposed curriculum to adopt and purchase would be the Get Set for School: Learning Without Tears. So just a little bit about this curriculum, it is a developmentally appropriate curriculum, it is Parent Aware approved, so those were kind of the two things that were really important to us, as well as aligned with the Minnesota State Standards for Early Childhood, which is the Early Childhood Indicators of Progress, excuse me. It does follow a scope and sequence and does have an alignment document for the state of Minnesota. It is very multi-sensory, so you can kind of tell by the picture up here, there are lots of pieces and manipulatives, things for children to really utilize hands-on versus just looking at a worksheet, or a piece of paper, or sitting and doing desk work, but instead being involved in opportunities to make letters out of things, to add and subtract or count various pieces and manipulatives as they utilize the program. The overarching curriculum has six large umbrella-type topics that move through the entire year. They're cross-curricular, and they allow for a deeper dive into individual topics so that their children can kind of develop higher-level thinking skills as they learn throughout those developmental domains. It has very purposeful play opportunities throughout the curriculum, yet still has lots of kindergarten readiness opportunities through letter formation, sounds, and an additional piece with the Learning Without Tears is the A to Z Map Man, which includes alphabet books so that those who are progressing through can use sight words and different things like that to help all children in the classroom. A couple, we just kind of did a strengths and weaknesses analysis. This curriculum was actually born out of language and literacy and then morphed into a whole-child curriculum as it was developed many years ago, and so it really does have that strong component. In addition, it does have a writing component, and then, as I mentioned, that A to Z Map Man, very multi-sensory, manipulatives, lots of pieces for the teachers to be able to utilize and have access to instead of one shared set for like the entire program. It has stood the test of time, like I mentioned, portions of this curriculum have been around for a very long time, and some of our staff had some knowledge of certain pieces of it. With the full adoption, they will be able to fully implement it within their classrooms. It was cost-effective and fit within the budget that we were given to work with. It works seamlessly with our current assessment system and our assessment tool, which is the work sampling system, so we'll still be able to utilize actual child pieces and works to show their progress throughout the year, as well as kind of a formal assessment piece that goes along with that, and the ability for us to expand over time. So we can start with our minimum implementation pieces and then expand as budgets or funding becomes available to add to it and enhance in other areas. A couple of the weaknesses that we did identify, where not every teacher will have access to, there is some tech pieces, there is some teacher demonstration opportunities on interactive panels, and some small portions of introduction to technology with letter and drawing apps. So at this time, not all of the classrooms would have access to that and would be a future purchase. The pieces would be available for each classroom in Otter Preschool to facilitate a small group with the manipulatives, but there will not be class sets within the budget that we had, so we would need to look at purchasing those in the future. And then there are some consumables, so in early childhood, we're a little bit hesitant about things that have some consumables, but the usage can be decided as we go through the curriculum, it doesn't hinge on those consumables. And then just a brief statement there on the standards alignment, as I mentioned, it does align with the ESIPS, but it also aligns with the district's kindergarten readiness sheet in the areas of language and literacy, but continues on with the writing, the numbers, the math, science, and social studies as well. And then lastly, those six overarching content topics allow for the project-based learning and that overall longer, higher-level thinking opportunities versus short choppy themes that kind of bounce from one to the next over time. So those are some of those. There, in the slideshow that was also provided, or the materials, excuse me, that were provided to you, did include the quotes, so the minimum kind of items that are needed to, the basic foundation and the minimum requirement does fit within the given budget. There is an additional twenty-one hundred dollars that would be needed for an implementation training that is required, and have talked to Amelia about the ability to access funds somewhere else to be able to have that training provided for the teachers. And then lastly, there was a wish list, as I mentioned, for a few of the items, for in the future, we had additional manipulative sets, a few consumables that the teachers would need, as well as future tech needs of two interactive panels, and a building set of ten iPads so that small groups would be able to access those with a teacher. So those wishlist items were not included in the quote that was given. Yes.
Can you go back, do you still have the one? Do you skip? All right, I got one in between there. So your wishlist?
Yes, that is tied to the budget.
Okay, it's not here, but it's there.
Yeah.
I got you, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. So that's kind of the overview of the curriculum, and I will open it up if anyone has any specific questions or things that I can help clarify about the process or the product.
So just a question on the implementation, so the twenty-one hundred dollars for staff development, after that staff development is done, if new staff come on, is there like a master teacher then, or how does that implementation part continue on to the next, for new staff, let's just say for new staff eventually come?
Absolutely. I don't know that the curriculum itself had a process for that, but my recommendation would be that the coordinator would also be trained so that when new staff come on, then they would be able to sit down with myself, and then we do pair up staff with a mentor throughout the year, so then we would utilize that for in the future. So they also offer quite a few overview, that wouldn't be the implementation, but some overview trainings that can be accessed on demand, so we could look into on-demand options. Great question. Any other questions?
Did, I don't remember, when we did the five-four-four thing last year, each teacher, each staff, each teacher had a hundred dollars to spend on the class. Did that go to preschool too, or did they connect?
Did you connect?
Last year, it did, yes.
Right, so if there's any teachers that haven't spent, they have to have three days to do it, I'm wondering, that would be a good place to get the additional consumable materials?
Right.
Because if you don't spend that money by Saturday, it's going back to the foundation. So that might be something to look at this weekend.
We spent our money, but I appreciate you making sure we did.
And the five-four-four foundation is good for some of these other things too. And we'll utilize those.
Correct, yes.
Okay, good.
Anything else? All right, thank you. All right, our next board board member will be Amelia Lamar.
Hi.
Hey.
Thank you for having me here, we've gotten a little bit to see you guys for a bit, it seems lately. This evening, I'm going to present to you a proposal for K-2 literacy, and this will be a nice follow-up to literacy in preschool. So this last fall, I presented last spring's third-grade reading MCA proficiency scores as part of the World's Best Workforce Report, this is the slide from that report this last fall. While our district does continue to score well above the state average, there was some discussion that was prompted from that at that time. Per those discussions that stem from that report, I began looking into literacy instruction at our lower grade levels. However, I did not focus my time with third-grade teachers. I think we would all agree that literacy instruction begins well before third grade, although that kindergarten, and in some cases even before that. So during that process, I met with kindergarten, first, and second-grade teachers to discuss and evaluate the current literacy curriculum and the resources that they currently have available for literacy instruction. This is currently the district's third year in using the Wonders literacy curriculum across our elementary grade levels. Since the time of adoption, there has been an abundance of research that has come out, commonly referred to as the Science of Reading, that has deeply explored how children learn to read. All of this research is quite consistent in its emphasis on the foundational skills of reading, including formal phonological and phonemic awareness instruction. We've also had multiple K through two teachers who have completed or are currently completing letters training, which also has an emphasis on the Science of Reading. So with this new knowledge and understanding, combined with now two full years, almost a third year of full Wonders implementation, we were able to work as a K-2 team to evaluate the Wonders curriculum and maybe try to pick out what exactly it was that's missing. So together, we kind of went through three key domains of literacy instruction, including vocabulary, comprehension, writing, phonics, phonemic awareness, and fluency. It was consistent across kindergarten, first, and second grade that Wonders does a very nice job in providing vocabulary instruction, comprehension, and grammar and writing instruction. It was also consistent in all three grade levels that there is a lack of direct phonics and phonemic awareness instruction. So this is learning to understand and manipulate letter sounds, decoding and encoding words, and kind of all of those core foundational pieces of reading. So while there were pieces of that throughout the Wonders curriculum, it maybe wasn't the direct focus, or there wasn't nearly enough materials to adequately teach those foundational skills. So all of these skills together work to develop reading fluency. Without two of the core areas adequately provided, it will be difficult to develop fluent readers. Lack of phonics and phonemic awareness can also hinder reading comprehension development. While there is comprehension, like I said, that is built into the curriculum, it will be difficult for students to grow within that, especially when they're reading independently, when they struggle to read the words themselves. If they're focusing on the words, it's hard to ask them what they read about, right? So while the World's Best Workforce Report shared reading proficiency on the MCA, our K-2 students do not take the MCA, although that doesn't begin until third grade. Our K-2 students do take the NWEA map assessment. One of the instructional areas assessed on the reading map assessment is foundational skills. So I pulled this image directly from the July 2022 NWEA map reading fluency skills report, that shows exactly what is assessed under the foundational skills category. And as you can see, there are three domains, two of which are phonological awareness and phonics and word recognition. These are where those skills that we just identified as missing in the Wonders curriculum are assessed.
Can I ask you a question on that one quick? Do we test that three times a year?
Yes. So therefore, I have two mini-proposals to make one big proposal, all to support literacy instruction in grades K-2. First is UFLY Foundations, and second is the Hegarty's Phonemic Awareness Program. Both of these are direct instruction in phonics and/or phonemic awareness. They both require a little prep, fit into the currently established literacy blocks, are both cost-effective, have no ongoing costs, and directly support each other and the Wonders curriculum. These programs are often mentioned in research and reports relating to the Science of Reading and directly support what teachers learned in their letters training. UFLY Foundations, we start there, is a daily phonics instruction program. After multiple teachers have piloted this program, it was consistent in getting high reports with high levels of student engagement, easy prep and use, the ability to differentiate at both ends of a spectrum in a small reading group setting, and its clear and consistent routines. Upon presenting this program then to all K-2 teachers, it was unanimously accepted as being proposed, or excuse me, and is being proposed, in the K-2 general education and special education classrooms, as well as a K-2 Title I reading support program. Its consistency and routines will be very beneficial in collaborating amongst interventionists both in and out of the general education classroom, consistency among grade levels, provide useful progress monitoring, and can provide consistency for the students themselves as they grow and work to learn some of these foundational skills. A really quick look into what the curriculum itself looks like a little bit. There are very little materials needed for UFLY, there is one manual that consists of one hundred and twenty-eight lessons that covers all K-2. All digital materials have already been organized into one central location, this is what that would look like there, and this includes letter slides, handwriting slides, as videos of how to write the capital A, a lowercase a, and digital blending boards for teachers to use on their interactive panels. There is training available, principal resources, extensive online support for implementation and continued use, as well as decodable passages. Want to highlight decodable passages very briefly. This is a quick example of one, excuse me, what one might look like. This aligns with Lesson fourteen for the concept of the C sound, note the layout of the decodable there. One primary issue that has come from a lot of this research for the Science of Reading and is also present in the Wonders curriculum, is the idea of queuing. That means either the entire decodable follows one letter pattern or sound on repeat, or there are pictures that make it easy to guess what the words are. Therefore, it's really easy for students to guess the correct words without actually having to read the words. Queuing isn't really possible with the decodables presented in UFLY. So while there is a focus on the primary concept at that time, which this one again is the C sound, it is also continually interleaving prior concepts into it. There are also no pictures on the decodables from UFLY. Students do have the ability to draw what the passage is about, which really does provide a nice extension into comprehension in drawing what it's about when students are ready. I had mentioned interleaved practice. It is repeatedly shown that skills that are closely related to each other, such as learning letter sounds, when you use interleaved practice, it provides a much higher impact of long-term retention, meaning we're not going to start with what sound is A made, when everyone masters it, we move on, and then we don't go back to it. Interleaved means continually moving through it. So while a teacher might be directly teaching one concept, such as the short I sound, the lesson is continually interleaving previously learned topics as well. So this image here shows that the short I sound was introduced in Lesson eight, during which the short I sound was practiced forty-one times. In Lesson nine, the instructional focus is on the N sound, however, short I is practiced an additional fifty-nine times just in that lesson using words like in and pin. By the time students have completed Lesson seventeen, they will have practiced the short I sound three hundred and thirty-eight times, which was introduced back in Lesson eight, while still focusing their attention on the current concept. And so just continually interleaving those concepts together. Next is Hegarty's Phonemic Awareness, this is direct phonemic awareness instruction. Unlike phonics, where students are learning to recognize or produce letter sounds, phonemic awareness focuses more on the auditory pieces of literacy. If students do not develop a strong sense of phonemic awareness, it can directly impact their reading fluency, comprehension, spelling development, and so on. A common example I like to use, which I think a lot of you in here have heard me use recently, is the word dress. If a small child says they want to wear a dress today, a lot of times they use the J sound at the front of the word, dress. When you say it quickly, you don't hear the difference. If they don't properly develop strong phonemic awareness sounds, it is not uncommon necessarily for students upward of middle school to spell the word dress with a J in front. So Hegarty's phonemic awareness directly supports the phonics instruction that is presented in UFLY. It is again highly engaging for students, asks students to replace various word sounds, and teaches them that they can create new words by switching out certain sounds within a word. For example, one part of a lesson might ask students to replace various sounds, so the teacher might say, the word is cat, change c to p, and the word is. So the teacher might say, the word is cat, change c to p, and the word is, to which case students need to use their auditory understanding, their phonemic awareness, to change the word from cat to act. Which as adults, sounds pretty easy, but you gotta learn it, right? We all learned it at one point. Like UFLY, there is one manual, again, that covers the entire K two program. So again, makes for very easy collaboration among interventionists and from grade level to grade level. There are very little additional resources or ongoing costs required. There are lesson and support videos available on the Hegarty website, as well as, again, extensive online implementation and continuation resources available. So both programs do offer training options for teachers. So to summarize, I am proposing UFLY Foundations for Phonics and Hegarty's Phonemic Awareness for phonemic awareness instruction in grades K two to use as co-curricular options in addition to the Wonders curriculum. There is positive support from the DACRAT Committee on both of these, to which you receive the responses to. There is also unanimous support from all K two teachers for both programs, as well as very high levels of motivation to implement these programs as well, which is also very important. Our teachers are very motivated to help our students learn how to read and develop those foundational reading skills. Teachers who piloted the program for multiple weeks provided all positive feedback and said that they saw almost immediate improvements from how students approached reading, how they problem-solved reading, and how quickly it just clicked, all simply by implementing two simple programs that focus directly on foundational reading skills. I am confident that the adoption of a literacy program in other preschool, as well as the addition of UFLY Foundations and Hegarty's Phonemic Awareness, that we will see a positive trend in student reading outcomes in the coming years. And we'll answer any questions from the board.
Will these two add-ons be interspersed with the Wonders curriculum, or do you start with one thing and then progress and do all three separately, or how does that?
It would all take place during the literacy block.
Okay.
Okay. An average UFLY Foundations lesson is about 20, maybe 30 minutes long, and an average phonemic awareness lesson is about 15 to 20 minutes. So that's in addition to the reading instruction presented in Wonders. Yeah? Any questions?
So the numbers I saw was just over 3,000 for UFLY and just over 2,000 for Hegarty.
Correct.
Any additional training beyond those?
I have reached out, I do not have exact answers for that at this time.
Were any special education teachers involved in the vetting of that, of this curriculum? I'm just thinking of our students that maybe have auditory processing disorder or things like that.
Yep, so right now they're using LLI, which was something that we did determine wasn't the most effective in teaching foundational reading skills. So I began going through this process in our grade level meetings, of which special education teachers do attend K two.
So just a question on the 120 lessons. So if I'm a kindergarten student coming in, by the time I've gone through second grade, as a parent, I should anticipate that they've all gone through the 120 lessons? Is that, I take it there's a pace to it?
There is, there's scope and sequence, and it does provide suggested lessons for what would be suggested, I guess is the word for kindergarten versus first versus second. But that is kind of the beauty of the differentiation, that if you're going into second grade, you're not ready for the first suggested kindergarten, or excuse me, second grade lesson, the teacher has the ability to back it up a little bit as well.
Okay.
In a perfect world, yes, of course, yeah.
Okay. And then the other question I have for you is that the DACRAT Committee had asked for, I guess, some updates to the actual, how is it going? And so how would you, how would you want us to say that this is what, how we should, I mean, for them to have some information coming back of, is this effective? I'm just thinking of MAPS testing after that second one, that we should have some data? You should be able to be able to do.
That should be easy to pull. UFLY, for example, does have weekly progress monitors that directly show how well a student is decoding and encoding with the concepts for that week. So it'd be easy to see how students are progressing individually and as a whole class through the programs as well.
Okay, okay.
Just, Melanie asked a question, I was gonna ask the same question differently. So just to recap, we're keeping Wonders, we're using UFLY and Hegarty to complement that because of the weakness in phonics and phonical awareness.
Yes.
Do you see any, anything in the future, or, I mean, have we gotten back to Wonders and said, it should be nice if you had this, so we didn't have to buy two other products? Or do they not care, or?
I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say not care, I think that's not the right word.
Sure.
I think they care very deeply.
Okay.
But no, I think the primary pieces that were missing were phonics and phonemic awareness.
Right. I mean, do you anticipate, like, in a future release, that they might add, start adding something like that?
I do not know.
They are aware of it though.
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
You mentioned letter formation, so that's involved in K through two. And for the second graders, is there any letter formation practice with cursive, or does that start in third grade?
That usually would, our teachers at Cleveland usually is where we implement cursive. Am I right? Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your time.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, our next board report will be Scott Colback, third elementary principal at Adams McKinley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think I'm gonna go out of order a little bit in my presentation and share with you first what I was going to share with you last, because I think it's a good tie-in to what Amelia was talking with you about. So recently, I went into a classroom and observed a first grade teacher teach a lesson from the UFLY curriculum. All of the teachers have that right now, piloting it, so to speak, but they don't really want to pilot it, they just want us to adopt it. This is a veteran teacher, Mrs. W., we call her, Kim Walvotny, is a first grade teacher at Adams School. And so she is on my list to evaluate this year, and bless her heart, she said, "I want you to observe me teaching this new curriculum." So it takes some nerve, I guess, some confidence, some trust, to say, "Come on in, building principal, and observe me teaching something that I'm just starting to learn this new curriculum." So I observed her teach about a 30-minute lesson out of UFLY. Just a reminder, UFLY stands for University of Florida Literacy Institute. And so here's a veteran teacher, really excited about teaching reading, really excited. And I'll just tell you about the lesson format. It started with phonemic awareness, and then it went into something called visual drill, moved into auditory drill, then blending drill, and then new concept. Let's write together, watch me read, now you read, watch me spell, let's spell together. So under each of those categories then, there were, there were things that she was doing with her kids, or they were doing together, and it was really good, it was really good. So I just appreciate Amelia's work on all of this, our grade level meetings coming up now, once a month, the last remaining grade level meetings we have this year. Our focus is strictly on this UFLY curriculum, just talking about it more, learning more about it, sharing experiences, presentations, that sort of thing. So it was just kind of a good, a good lead-in for what I was gonna talk to you about last. Here's what I was gonna talk to you about first, I wanted to talk to you about what happened Friday at McKinley. So we had our, in the past, we've called it kindergarten registration, we've called it kindergarten roundup, now it's called kindergarten meet and greet. And in the past, we've always done this from 5:00 to 6:00 PM on a Monday in late March. We decided to try something new. We had an early out, an early dismissal on Friday, so we thought, let's do kindergarten meet and greet Friday afternoon. Offered two different times for parents to come on in. So the times were 12:45 to 2:00, or 2:15 to 3:30. We had 85 soon-to-be kindergarteners attend kindergarten meet and greet on Friday, 85 attended. While they were there, you know, they went off with a kindergarten teacher into a classroom. And what was really nice is, because we had a total of 85, and because we split them into two groups, each teacher was taking about four kids with her to their classroom while I was visiting with the parents. One of the things I asked the parents, because we wanted some feedback from them, if they were enjoying the new time, or if they would have preferred the five to six times. So we asked them to kind of raise hand, we did a hand count. 63 hands went up. Now only one hand could go up per child, so we talked about that, right? If you're, if two of you are here with one child, we just want one hand to go up, so we took care of that. But anyway, 63 hands went up for people being in favor of this afternoon process choosing between two times. 15 hands went up that preferred the five to six timeframe, which means then that seven people maybe must not have voted if we had 85 students there. But here's what we don't know. We don't know how many families didn't attend because it was offered in the afternoon, and it just didn't work for them. We may be able to find out the answer to that in the future, because here's what we know historically, is that about 65% of our incoming kindergarten class attends the registration event or the meet and greet event. So if you work out the math and you figure it out, you know, 85 kids showed up, and so 85 would be 65% of what. I did the math, I think my math was right, I think it was like 130 kids. We're gonna have more than 130, we really are. I guarantee you, we'll have more than 130. We'll have probably 10 or 12 that do kindergarten over again, so now we're at about 140 or 142. I guarantee you, we'll have way more than that. I think we'll probably push 175 or 180 by the time we get to the fall. But time will tell on whether or not that new timeframe is a good, is a good timeframe to hold kindergarten meet and greet. I do know this, as of today, we have 47 kids fully registered for kindergarten in the fall. Kindergarten, registering for kindergarten is a two-step process. So we have 47 who are fully registered, their parents have done both steps. We have another 40 who have completed step one of the process. So there's 87. Just to give you an example, last, leading into the school year, in August, we had, I think it was 35 families register their children for kindergarten in August, and then another nine in September. So as much as we try to get these families to register their child in March or April, it's just, people start thinking about school in August and register their child, not really knowing the amount of planning that it takes to get ready for a school year. All right, moving on. Last month, I talked to you a little bit about PBL, project-based learning, and I shared with you about a project that one kindergarten teacher had done. Now, the other nine kindergarten teachers are gonna start soon their project. If you recall, the project was titled, What's Your Favorite Pet? So I just wanted to give a little shout-out to a couple people in our community, one in our district, and then a doctor in our community, but Jesse Thorstedt works in our tech department. He's gonna go over to Companion Animal Hospital on Thursday of this week, and he's going to, from there, zoom in to all of the classrooms through Google Meet, and all of our kindergarten classrooms at the same time on Thursday are going to see Dr. Thea Franson from Companion Animal Hospital. And she's gonna talk to them, she'll conference with all of the classrooms at the same time, talk about what it means to be a good pet owner, she's gonna answer questions, the kids will take a virtual tour of the facility with her as Jesse Thorstedt follows her around. So just a really, really neat thing. And then I think recently, I came up with, was able to find, kindergarten teachers came to me and said, hey, we need more books for our project, we need more books about animals. So I came up with some money for each classroom to order some new books. So excited to see and be a part of that on Thursday, and just a little shout-out then to Dr. Thea Franson and then our own Jesse Thorstedt. One School, One Book, I've talked to you about that before, that is just really exciting, really fun. The students and staff alike enjoy that. That's at Adams School. The book is called Bigfoot, Littlefoot. The kids are really enjoying, so in the story, the main character is Hugo, he's a little Bigfoot, so he's a little Sasquatch, so he's a Squid. And the kids are really enjoying some photos. We've had some spottings or some sightings of Hugo around Adams School, so those pictures are shared with the students every once in a while by their teachers. Hugo's been spotted on the playground, in the health office, sitting behind my desk, in the library, so all kinds of good things. But the idea is to get kids excited about reading and to get their parents involved with that, so the kids bring the book home, read a chapter with mom or dad, and then the next day, bring the book back to school, and then the same chapter is read by their teacher allowed to them. Wanted to thank our custodial staff and our grounds crew for moving the obstacle course around our district. So a couple weeks ago, we had the obstacle course set up in the McKinley Gymnasium, the kids absolutely love it. The obstacle course was recently moved to Adams School. My assumption is that today was day one of the obstacle course at Adams, I will find that out tomorrow for sure when I'm there. But a thank you to Perry Marcus, Eric Strong, and anybody else that has a responsibility in moving all of that. It's one of the favorite weeks of the year when it comes to FIED. It can sometimes get a little bit long and monotonous for the FIED teacher, but they make some little tweaks to the course each day, so when the kids show up, they see something new about it, something has been changed, just enough to keep them really excited and So that is where I'm going to kind of come to stop here and entertain any questions from the board.
Any questions for Principal?
Is Squid a real word?
Not sure. I'd never heard of it until I started reading the book.
Is he taking over for Zero the Hero?
I, I don't know.
No, Zero the Hero.
Actually, I will say this, a special thank you to first grade teacher Jeremy Knick, who put on a costume, and to second grade teacher Pam Sherman, who took the photos. And then Pam blasts the photos out every once in a while with some, with some narrative for the teachers to read to their students. They're having a good time with it.
Thank you. Our next report will be from Principal Rind, our elementary principal at Cleveland.
Good evening, everyone. Since, well, the last board meeting that we recorded at, we were in the midst of conferences, there was a, it was a busy evening across our district. And I'm just pleased to say that we were able to contact with 94% of our families, which is just outstanding. Well, I appreciate that the parents have given a time to come in and hear statistics about their students, and also additional ways that they can support learning at home. So that is to be celebrated, we had a bunch of them out. And I just wanted to mention, I brought something for Sean Tell tonight, and I left it in my car, but I brought a ski shoe. And recently, the pre-science classes received their order of ski shoes, and they are incredible. I got to put on a pair and try them out one day when the North Country Trail Association and the US Fish and Wildlife Organization sponsored an event for our community, and they had ski shoes and skis and cross-country skis and snowshoes available. And what's really nice about the ski shoes is the bindings accommodate for a person's boot, so you can adjust the, adjust it to fit any foot size, which reduces the overall cost of. of the equipment that's needed. But, uh, some students from our National Honor Society spent some hours out at Prairie Science Class screwing on the bindings to the, um, the skis. And, um, I hope they got to try them because they're pretty cool. But on the bottom of these ski shoes, there's a skin. And, um, when students are learning how to cross-country ski, that allows them to, you know, move forward, but there's enough of, um, resistance with this skin on the bottom so they're not sliding back down the hill. So you can cut, cut trail, um, you can go, um, you know, up a hill and stay firm and continue going up the hill. So, um, this, it's really, really helpful for those students who are beginning to, just learning how to, to, um, ski, um, part of that progression, so, um, that is really a nice, a nice bonus. Um, so, and I just wanna say, these were funded by the Friends of the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center, a Five Forty-four Foundation grant, and then also the Otter PTO. So, um, without the support, the financial support from those organizations, this would not have been, have been possible. And then, um, during the month of March, um, Cleveland has also been doing, enjoying One School, One Book. This year, we, um, selected Clementine, Friend of the Week. And, uh, we did, um, a Clementine book last year as well and, uh, we decided to pursue this one, Clementine, Friend of the Week. The characters in the story, Clement, are Clementine, who's a third grade girl, and her friend Margaret, who's a fourth grade girl. And it's, um, they're working through some friendship issues and, um, attention issues and just a lot of timely topics that, um, the, the kids at Cleveland are also experiencing. Um, but we had a wonderful kickoff. We gathered in the gym and read chapter one together. And then throughout the month of March, kids would take their, um, individual books home and read a chapter with their parents and then bring it back and discuss and read with their classmates, which led us to the conclusion of, um, the book, Chapter Twelve. We gathered again for Chapter Twelve in the gym last Thursday afternoon and, um, enjoyed Chapter Twelve together. Clementine's cat was found and returned to her and it was really a happy ending. And then, um, Clementine, we had guest, Clementine herself was our guest, um, special guest. And after our gathering, she went around and delivered ice cream treats to all of the students in their classrooms. So, uh, it, it really does, it unites us. And I had the special privilege of getting to read Chapter One and Chapter Twelve to all of the students at Cleveland. Um, and it's really a special feeling when you have almost four hundred children looking at their book and just listening and, um, really enjoying liter, um, literature. So, um, a wonderful time. And that's, um, sponsored by our Otter PTO. They buy a, a book for every single student, um, and we really, really appreciate that support. Uh, one other, um, event that is sponsored by Otter PTO is gonna take place tomorrow and Wednesday. And, um, our fourth grade students are going to participate in a hands-on learning, um, opportunity through, um, promoted by the Minnesota Science Museum, and the focus is on engineering. So tomorrow, um, morning, we are going to walk over to our community education area and, um, sit in that big open, open space, it's all wide open right now, um, for an assembly where they're going to learn some concepts about engineering and be introduced to, um, the activities that they're going to be able to have some hands-on experiences with class by class, um, the remainder of tomorrow and then all day on Wednesday. So each class will have about an hour-long session to, um, have some hands-on experience, um, as well. So thank you much for the Otter PTO for sponsoring those activities. Um, third grade classes, I brought up, uh, PBL, a project-based learning unit to share with you. And their driving question for this unit is, if you were going to vacation at a national park, which one would you visit? And so over the course of fourteen days, um, students learned how to do some simple research. Um, it incorporated some, um, language arts benchmarks, social studies benchmarks, as well as some ISD standards. These included developing ideas and pursuing answers and solutions, um, some sort, short, short research that constructs knowledge about a topic, um, and then creating and interpreting simple maps and places. So, um, I, this is the final product. I'm just passing them because they're really, really pretty neat to look at. I'll just keep that. So their, um, their driving question was, um, if you're going to a national park, which one would you visit? Um, some of their learning targets, um, and objectives were the student would be able to locate a national park on a map, determine the climate of a region, identify interesting facts through digital and print materials, write informative paragraphs, create a public project, which is this brochure, and, and create a map. So on the very backside of that, you'll see that they did, they created a map, presented some digi, digital resources and then, um, published that. And then they, they each had the opportunity to present their, um, their final project in a small, in a small group, which included one day of getting to practice that first. So, um, that was really important to take, um, a little, some of them, wiggle them a little. And then these connect, um, connected to our portrait of a graduate in the area of, uh, communicating, um, core knowledge, being a creative problem solver and also a contributing citizen. Um, so it was, it was a very enjoyable project-based learning unit. Uh, some of the third grade teachers have done this already and others are going to be implementing this with their classrooms here, um, here coming up. So, fun with that by all. And then lastly, I will just share that we are, um, in our final phase of, um, preparing for the MCA, reading math test, which will take place April nineteenth and twentieth for reading and then math will be, um, done April twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. So we are, um, students at Cleveland will be taking the MCA's on their prom books in their classrooms this year. And, um, our teachers and, um, support staff are being trained to be proctors, um, for classroom setting, small group settings, and also several students will be taking on an individual basis as well. So, we're gearing up for that. And, um, our curriculum director, Amelia Lamar, uh, over, well over a month ago, um, shared some resources with teachers about, um, some of the MCA type of questions that would be asked so that they could introduce or, um, help students become prepared and, um, confident for that test. Some of the teachers have been doing that right away in the morning and showing, projecting a question and then working through it together. What might you look for? Uh, what is the unnecessary information? Just, um, letting them know, you know, um, some, just some general ideas and helping them be prepared. So, we are, we're gonna be ready for the MCA tests. And with that, I would take any questions.
So, so this brochure is prepared by the, the fourth grader?
Third grader.
Third grader?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, so they, they learn how to use some digital resources and gather their, do the research, gather their information, decide what to include, what not, what's not important to them. Um, those are things that caught his eye and then being able to put that together is a nice brochure.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment because all but two classes of fourth graders came to the Historical Society recently too, and they were able to make a connection between those ski shoes that you just talked about
Oh, yeah.
and the snow shoes that we have that were made by fur travelers and Native American people. And it was, it was really, um, fun to watch them make that, that connection, yeah.
Those other two classes are scheduled.
I know, yes, yes. On snow days.
Yes, yeah. And then, you know, just one other note, um, there's four sections of Prairie Science Class right now, and four that are Cleveland-based. And the four Cleveland-based classes were able to go join their classmates at Prairie. And, um, the kids who had experienced snow shoeing or ski shoeing were able to help the other ones experience that and learn as well. So there, there was some really neat, um, you know, reciprocal, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next report then is from Principal Hurst, from the Central Principal.
Uh, the twenty-twenty-three History Day was recently held. Um, this year's theme was Frontiers in History, People, Places, and Ideas. Uh, congratulations to a couple of sixth graders, Thea Masri and Lucy Flugstead. They received honorable mention on their exhibit, uh, on Francis Perkins. Um, a shout out to Danielle Buckmeyer for, she's been the advisor for the last several years and she does a great job on this. Uh, other competitions, we had a tri-college math competition recently up at Morehead. Uh, we had two of our eighth graders, uh, compete and place in the top ten. Trigby Ronovic and Jacob Jenk, uh, did a nice job and they were recognized, uh, I believe on Facebook on our website, so. Uh, Tindy touched base on MCA testing. Uh, it starts in the middle school in about three weeks. Uh, we've been gearing up for that, talking about that in our class meetings. And, um, as Tindy also mentioned, uh, teachers and parents have been getting trained. So we're ready to go. Uh, last week, we had a fun week. Um, student council just determined we needed to have a little fun, so we did Spirit Week. And Spirit Week in middle school is dress-up days and that, that checks the box. So you could have dressed up as Hawaiian, neon or eighties, because those go together, and then of course, uh, otter wear. Um, and so based on the pictures that were sent to me and across the district, I don't know who had more fun, the students or the teachers. Uh, the week ended with a seventh and eighth grade dance put on by the student council as well. So Mr. Steinbrenner and student council worked out the details and, and, um, according to ticket sales, we had two hundred and sixty seventh and eighth graders there. And there's only about four hundred that could go. We'd only kept it at grades seven through eight, no out-of-town guests, no sixth graders, no ninth graders, just seventh, eighth grade. Um, and the dance ran from seven PM to nine PM, like they all should. So, uh, so Spirit Week, fun week, right? We all, I, I participated, which was out of my comfort zone and I, I only, I only wore a tie one day when I had a meeting, when I needed to be present at it, so. Uh, my PBL update for this week, or for this month is, um, out at the Prairie. Last fall, Ms. Tyzel and Ms. Greenagle worked through a project titled GOT Invasives. The objective was to have students create a brochure or an article, uh, to inform the citizens of Fergus Falls about what plants are invasive and what they could do with invasives that they find in their backyard. Working as a team, students created a visual display board that teaches people in the community of Fergus Falls about reasons to remove, how to remove invasives, argue for and against invasives, uh, benefits edible invasives, and arguing why, uh, native grasses need to be protected. So a wide, wide range of, uh, um, objectives there. Uh, most groups enjoyed the challenge of working together. Whenever we were working on the pro, on the project, the classroom was always buzzing with happy chatter and groups are focused on their work. Naturally, there were a few groups that needed to, uh, help working together or staying on task, but for the most part, they were really eager to, to do that. Um, the students enjoyed a project that had value and purpose and, but they did also feel the weight of it being presented to the public. So, yeah. Um, according to Ms. Tyzel and Ms. Greenagle, they learned, the teachers learned this because they had some big ah-hahs, not only the students, but sometimes the teachers too. Um, some groups taught to, uh, they chose plants that they hadn't studied or didn't know anything about problematic. Um, but, uh, so we let them roll with it. The, the teachers let them roll with that, but in hindsight, they might do a little more steering on that, uh, to kick off the project. Um, they started with too many options and choices. As they downsized the project, it went, it, the project went much smoother. Uh, developing a strong timeline was really important. Um, teachers, uh, but as, but we as teachers struggled with what to do when they didn't meet the deadline on their own project. Um, they learned that groups of three were ideal for them. Uh, they tried groups of four and two, but groups of three were the best. And then the lack of computer experience that they had in Google Docs and Google Slides, um, you see the, uh, the pamphlets that they created, but that slowed down the practice and, um, the process and that was a factor in some groups not being able to finish on time. Um, last comments here, reflecting on these brought us a, a new twist to the project. They would like to modify that project to create seasonal brochures at the Prairie Wetlands that kids make similar to what you're looking at right here. So kind of ironic, we're doing the same thing. Uh, they might use those to diverse trails or teach people about plants, um, that they, uh, encounter out on the prairie. Pretty cool. Uh, overall, Thea and Becky felt this was a valuable learning experience for both students and teachers. They kept saying that, they learned a lot too. Uh, they look forward to tweaking this project and excited about the prospects of students creating brochures for the visiting public. Pretty cool. Good stuff. That's all I have tonight. Any questions?
Ivan, I would think your, your middle school kids who have spent time as fourth graders at Prairie Wetlands would have done remarkably well in that project because they know the invasives. I've been up there many times. That's one of the things that they really drive home is invasive plants. And, uh, so groups of three or two or four makes a difference, but having somebody other who's spent a lot of time at true-rail wetlands as a fourth grader would make a difference too.
Any other questions for Principal Hurst? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next report is from Principal Anderson.
Hello. It feels like we were just here the other day. I don't, I think I counted like sixteen or seventeen days since the last time we came. We haven't been in school very often lately, so, um, we have a few things. We had some competitions, like Ivan talked about the math competition. We had one at the high school. We had History Day. The Otter Bots and FFA have all competed regionally, did really well. Um, some FFA kids are going on to state. We have some IQ kids who made state for, uh, the, uh, History Day and I'll talk about them during their part of their, our, my presentation. We also had the ABLE Games come in. Uh, TNT puts them on. Our kids are actually participating this week, uh, at the ABLE Games, so TNT came in last week. The goal was to do it first hour with our Unified FIED class. Unfortunately, uh, it was a Wednesday, so guess what happened?
Snow.
Got a bunch of snow. So we had a two-hour late start and we did, uh, the Unified Kids came down and then middle school kids also came down, some seventh graders, which were gonna be part of that process in the morning also. And they got to do forty-five minutes of FIED and I don't think I've seen kids work that hard in FIED in a long time. Um, they were enjoying it, they were sweating and they were looking for more, so. Uh, one of the things the ABLE, um, group is looking for is when we do that, it's specifically about getting regular education kids and DAP kids into the same setting and doing the same activities and then training our, our DAP students how to prepare for the games or activities that are coming up. So they did lightweights, was purposeful. It was to get them to be able to build skills and strength, be able to participate in games that are coming up. We had a professional football player there. I think the kids were really excited about that, um, had some opportunities. We will send some high school students along with the special ed kids to the ABLE Games as their mentors and people who will work with them when they're there competing. Um, so they'll have a blast doing that this week. Over about two weeks ago, we had the opportunity through our, um, American Indian, uh, family, uh, committee, we brought in Dan from, uh, North Dakota. He presented on Indigenous foods and PE activities. And we had, uh, seventh and eighth graders participating and high school students participating. Uh, one of the, one day was strictly about foods, so we brought foods. He spent five hundred dollars that we reimbursed him for through funds to have, uh, the opportunity for seventh and eighth graders and high school kids be able to actually make Indigenous foods. Um, I went in there, it smelled really good, um, and it was something the kids hadn't seen before and they enjoyed it. Each day, um, we also had an opportunity where just Indigenous students came in and made the meals, also that were a little bit different than what they made in their, right, other classrooms. So it was about, um, that group of students also. The very next day, he came back, um, for PE. And we had kids again, um, doing activities they have never done. Um, they were doing Indigenous activities that we would, and could easily run in FIED class. Uh, one of the teachers goes, I don't think the kids have had this much fun in fifth grade FIED all year long. Uh, they were getting, do something they hadn't done for a long time or ever really, so. Uh, we will look to bring Dan back again next year, um, if he's willing to come back. He was amazing with the kids and the kids had a blast having him here doing both participation with those opportunities. Uh, we do have spring activities starting, our spring play has started. Um, the high school students are taking the MCA test this week and then with following two weeks, they will take the science and math test. On April fourth, we will take the ACT at the high school. We will lock down the twenty-eight-hundred hallway and no one will be allowed to walk down it and we will send, we'll keep the seniors at bay. They will go, they will not come to school that day. Hence, that is their area of the, the building, so they don't come to school on the day we have ACT testing. Uh, registration is complete, waiting on, um, the process of scheduling and FTE from requests. And we are in discussions currently with the middle school about reorganizing some space in classrooms for both the high school, middle school as we move forward. Uh, the student council had the opportunity to have stu, uh, the blood drive. Uh, we had students, staff, and community that came in. Um, it's always fun to watch people come in and wear their little stickers that they gave blood from the last week. Uh, one of the things we're working with, uh, we have a student working with Thrive right now and she's working on some activities for us for outer time with SEL and connecting career and college readiness with that. So, um, we're gonna do one activity per, uh, week, so it'll be two SELs and two, um, career and college readiness, um, each. So it'll be two SELs and two career and college readiness each month. So we'll make sure that we only do one activity each month, each week. We are at pass standards alignment at the high school. We are now in scope and sequence. A few people are behind, but they were quickly catching up with some days they've had to work on that. Our focus is on intentional consistency, on student equity, where all students have rigorous opportunities within the classroom. So we're providing them the same opportunities, no matter if they're in special education or if they're in regular education. And we are also working on a shared purpose of instructional strategies, forming assessments for student learning and engaging and collaborative learning. So we're having those conversations. And those things will ebb and flow as we go through next year to make sure that everything we're working on gets to where we want it to go. Kristin and the ALC has been busy. They will take their ACT testing on April fourth at Lakes Country Cooperative. That way, all the kids taking the testing are in the same space and they don't have to worry about noise. And of course, you know, Rollo might want to come in and participate in the ACT testing, so. And she, at the ALC, they don't let students who have not completed Semester One of Advanced Algebra take the ACT test. They'll come back as a senior and take it with that opportunity moving forward. They want them to be successful and also want them to have the opportunity to be able to be on the right math class that will give them the success they need. MCA testing begins this week for tenth graders. And they have something they call Semester One All-Star. And Rollo Award winning winners that students have recognized for their, in their ceremony in April. Each student receive a sweatshirt with the appropriate patch on the sleeve that represent what their award, what their award was earned for. These two awards were initiated by the ALC Student Advisory Board. All-Star students are students who have maintained a ninety percent attendance or higher and earn full credit in all courses. And in some cases, earn additional credits beyond full credits in the semester. So they've recovered credits they had lost prior to attending the ALC. The Rollo Award, students are nominated by the ALC staff. These students are recognized for making significant change and how they're addressing the barriers to success in school and exhibit one of the following qualities, one or more. Hardworking, willingness to risk, take risks in their learning, be respectful, responsible, honest, a leader, confident, speaks up to help others, participates in advisory activities or school store, role model, kind to students and staff, and optimistic, positive supports to others. Kristin's academic highlights are the econ class is working on the stock market, which is very interesting. One of the young men who was part of the interviews for our new ALC coordinator is big into the stock market. And that's all he could talk about that day. I don't remember if you remember that, Jeff?
I do.
He was doing some shirt sells and shirt covers during the whole time we were interviewing during his time. They are currently in the top ten in the state of Minnesota right now, so.
The ALC?
Yes, they are extremely excited. They were in first place for a little while. He made a big money gate deal for them, and then I think he lost money like two days later. So I check on Ethan quite often to see how he's doing over there. He is very willing to communicate with me how his stock market is going. World History, they're working on their project-based learning with Judah. Students are evaluating the effectiveness and success of the French Revolution. It will be holding their trial here today and this week. If you have time, feel free to stop over and watch. Their judge is Stephanie Johnson, who subs for us, but was also a trial attorney in criminal cases. So it'll be interesting to find out which side here has the win in the court in their project base. Summer programming for Kristin has begun work on that process in preparation for someone else taking over. They, some dates have had to change because of that. All student, all programs will run Monday through Friday. Credit recovery will not begin until June twelfth and goes through August eleventh. And they'll take their normal two-week break. Students who are not finished by August eleventh, individual accommodations will be made for the students to complete if they've, if they've completed fifty percent of the content by that time. So they'll work with them as they move through the school year to make sure they cover, recover those credits. Fast Track will begin June twelfth and end June thirtieth. The school day will be extended because they have to get that in before they take their first break. So that'll go from nine to two thirty. And Otter Adventures, time will remain the same. And they'll do June nineteenth to June thirtieth from nine to three thirty. And July twenty-fourth to August fourth. IQ, they are busy MCA testing, so Ryan is out and about. Did he call you about his little incident? He left his computers in his locked vehicle and the computers weren't there the next morning. Went out to get them. So he called me. But they're, they were successful in giving the students tested while they were there. They also are doing pre-registration, so they're working on students who are registering for next year at IQ, not registering, maybe moving on or graduating, undecided. And making sure that if they're not sure, their status is unknown. They're making phone calls to make sure students are ready to go beginning of school year next year. And the IQ Academy, the two students, their sixth grader, Saya Roberts and Isabel Ray, were the state qualifiers for the History Day website, Frank Morris and his guide dog Buddy. And they have a new register, and I know Ryan and Teresa are extremely excited about this. Chelsea McGinnis started, so they're extremely happy to have her on board and taking some of that work off their plates. Any questions for the, from the board?
Did you say that the prize, the badge prize was a sweatshirt?
They get a sweatshirt and then they, the prizes, the badges they earn, they have them sewn on their sweatshirts. The kids wear them around, they're pretty cool, yes. So after April, when she has that first, that next meeting, when the kids get their new ones, they haven't had them before, and they get their badges, we'll see a lot of new sweatshirts over there.
I thought that when we were, well, a couple of us were here for the ABLE Games. I thought that Connor McCover, you know, for being an NFL player, sometimes you think of, you know, some of them aren't the best role models. So I'll tell you what, the guy, he's a center, he's in Eric Jess, he's a native of Fargo, Fargo Shan, the graduate. He's the nicest guy and interacts with the kids and just a, you never, if you didn't, somebody didn't tell you he was a football player for the NFL, you wouldn't know that. He's just, you would think he's a teacher.
He, this is his passion. That's one of the goals, that when he's finished playing, this is what he's going to spend time with. The coolest thing for him is he's done this a lot at many schools. We were the first school to actually autograph something and give it to him. He thought that was pretty cool. We gave him a girls' basketball that said Fergus Falls High School on it. So he was pretty, pretty happy about that.
Right, because he gave away a whole bunch of autographed footballs. I think we've actually gotten, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our last report will be Superintendent Drake. We're glad you're feeling better.
Yes, thank you.
I'm glad I am, too.
Yeah, my apologies that I missed a couple of weeks ago, but such is life, I guess. Some thank yous to go out. You wouldn't know it by looking outside or by our temperatures, but we are in the fourth quarter of the school year. So we've got only about, well, we're spilling over a little bit into June with some makeup days. But we've early only got about nine weeks of school left. So it's hard to believe April and May will zip right along. So I do want to thank everyone for their work to date. It's very moment of pride for me to hear these reports from the principals at these meetings and listen to all the accomplishments of our students and staff. Some of the work that's being done with our project-based learning, really highlighting the level of critical thinking and creativity and problem solving and communication that's going on in our classrooms. So super proud of the organization and the work that's being done. So I want to continue to thank everyone for their hard work. There has been a lot placed on the staff over these last couple of years as we've adopted the curriculum, implemented the strategic plan. But I'm really excited about what's unfolding as a process of that as well. Several congratulatory notes, some of which may overlap a little bit. So I'll try to kind of weave in and out of what's been said already. The Fergus Otter Bots, we had a great time going over to Roosevelt and watching a demonstration of this robot. They went to competition, I believe that was up in Grand Forks. And this machine was absolutely amazing. So they didn't end up going on, which tells me that some of the other robots must have been equally as impressive. And I tried to do a little video of it, but it was, the file was too large to get to my computer to show that as a demo. But this is a picture of the robot, and it would pick up cones and other blocks, and it would place them in various stations. And then the end task was to balance the robot on that ramp that you see behind it right there, which is a little trickier than it looks, because they needed to calculate the speed to go up it and then stop it right in the middle so that it was perfectly balanced. But listening to the students talk about the experience and the number of volunteer coaches that spend hours and hours working with these students outside of the normal school day, what an absolutely fantastic learning opportunity for these kids, many of whom will go on to pursue careers in engineering or associated fields, computer science, based on these experiences and their interests. So thoroughly enjoyable. And again, my congratulations to the hard work that went into this project. Subregion knowledgeable results, so this goes back a couple of weeks. In the subregion, only six teams get to go on to the region competition. And Fergus Falls ended up having three of the six. So very proud of the group there, was a really nice showing. They had the regional results, so six teams competed. We were just out of the running for a trip to go to state. So you needed to be in the top two. Alexandria sent one team and Morehead sent one team. And then our three teams finished third, fifth, and sixth. But congratulations to all those teams on a great season. Talking about speech, so Speech just finished its last regular season Invitational in Detroit Lakes this last Saturday. Alana Stoltenberg, who I believe is only a freshman, placed first in humorous interpretation. And that was the category, all of us like to think we're funny, right? And so humorous interpretation is the single largest number of competitors. So for her to come out as the champion of that competition really says a lot for where she's at. Maggie Hykes was second in discussion, Aiden Stern was fifth in discussion. And then Harrison Rogues, seventh, missed the podium by one point. And Enma Feigum was seventh in humorous interpretation. Their subsections are this Friday in Underwood. So I want to wish the team the best of luck in the upcoming competition. We talked about Central Region History Day. So KSS ninth graders, Aiden Miletto, David Hughes, Alexis Gunther are all state qualifiers. Miletto and Hughes did a piece on Sputnik, and Gunther did one on Charles Schultz. And I think the rest of the folks were mentioned in earlier reports. So I will move on from that, but there's a nice photo of some of our competitors. And then I want to talk a little bit about SEL. And so with some of the concerns from the community, we just want to make sure and reassure that we are having a very transparent process for adoption. And as we talked about this administratively, what makes the most sense for us is rather than have DACRAC and the board do entire curriculum adoptions, we will put a, basically Amelia has set up a repository where every single lesson that we would be taught under SEL will be put in the repository. The DACRAC committee can pull up every single lesson, and they can provide feedback to the board on every single lesson that's in that document. Those would be the lessons we're teaching. And as they have concerns about any one of them, they are certainly encouraged and invited to communicate any of those concerns to the board. So as a school board, when this adoption eventually comes before you, you will know the feedback on every single lesson and can decide if there are some units or lessons that you want to remove from the curriculum or not. So I don't know any other way to be more transparent with what we're teaching and how we're going about it. Facility management, I have been talking about this commercial teaching kitchen for what seems like months. It is done. Our students have begun cooking in it. They did a tomato soup with some homemade croutons. They're making puppy chow this week. And they did one other meal as well, which I am drawing a blank on. But they've started to use it already. Very happy that this project now has been completed and we have students enjoying the benefits of this learning station. So this, later this week, I say this with a little less confidence, we should be having the two chiller units shipped out. This has been an ongoing moving target, but that's what we've been told. So as information confirming that they are on a truck heading here is conveyed to us, I will pass that along as well. And with that, I can certainly field any questions.
Do you think the commercial kitchen will be used by community ed also?
I do.
Are they developing some newer things now to take advantage of that facility?
Yes, I do. And that, Mary was involved in some of the initial early discussions with that and planning for that space, so absolutely.
Where would the public access that repository for the SEL?
When it's ready, it can go on the district website and people can interact with it. The way that it's set up is it'll list the title of the lesson, which is interactive. So if you click on it, it'll, it'll pull up what the lesson is. And some of them are kind of single sheets, and some of them might be a series of four, four or five slides with a little video clip, et cetera. But it will be very easy for the community to see exactly what, what's being covered.
Any other questions for Superintendent Drake?
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our general consent items. And we have the minutes from the March thirteenth board meeting. And then some personnel. So Elaine, I'll read those. We have a support staff resignation of Ariana Velasco. Activities secretary, her last workday will be April fifth, twenty twenty-three. And then we have certified staff resignation of Alexandra, or Ally Nicklausson, outreach teacher at KSS, will be effective at the end of school year. And then we have a certified staff retirement, which we'll read here. A resolution later in our agenda for Linda Zudini, math teacher at KSS, effective at the end of the school year. And then a certified staff leave of absence request for Laura Woder, our English teacher at KSS. She is requesting a three-year extended leave of absence beginning next school year, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And then First Falls Education Association, a notice of desire to negotiate the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five master agreement. Could I get a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, so on the certified staff leave of absence, then, you know, is there any kind of assurance that after three years, that we don't, aren't going to boot another teacher? And if this particular staff person or any of our staff, their job lack, they have the ability to ask for that?
Well, if approved in three years, they would have after three years, yes.
Okay.
Because that's Minnesota statute.
They can ask for it back, but then it's discretionary on the board to provide it or not?
After three years, what they, when March fifteenth comes every year, they can request return for the following year.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that you have plenty of time to prepare. So March fifteenth is a deadline by Minnesota statute. So when they do, this person then could ask their job back by March fifteenth of next school year to return the following school year. So then the board would have time and staff would have enough time to prepare. Good question.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Consent items are approved. There's no old business, we'll move on to new business. First thing is adoption of the Otter preschool curriculum. Get set for school, learning without tiers curriculum, effective for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Can I get a motion to approve that adoption?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That one is adopted. Her next item is adoption of the K-two reading instruction curriculum, U fly and Hagerd. Presented by Amelia, effective for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
I'd just like to, just to make sure that we, I don't know if we need to amend it or not, but just to make sure that there is a, um, update on this to the curriculum, to DACRAC committee. They had requested it and I want to make sure it gets followed through. Um, after the, maybe the winter testing for maps, just so they can see how it's working with this curriculum, so. I just know they had requested it, some people have requested, I just want to make sure it doesn't. That we, a, as the board acknowledge it and that we make sure that gets followed through, so.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is effective. Um, next we have the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Fergus Falls School District Calendar.
Any discussion on this first?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, just for our principals, um, there's been some discussion this year about days and value of days and, and so I don't know if it's, I know we've done this in the past, where wherever that end date is, is that finals week? Excluding, excluding seniors of course, if it happens in the spring, because they're gone. So their finals have to take place. But would it help with, with the calendar of, of having that somewhere or somewhere that people know that it's going to be finals week? Uh, the only reason I'm bringing this up, there's, I think it was during a, uh, construction season, if I remember right. Anyway, the teachers had requested basically, and I mean, sometimes the boards are bad people. We just said we were going to work up to the last day, so we were just going to follow through. And they really appreciated that, that, because then they weren't trying to necessarily try to figure something else out. And I'm just wondering, would that help with the calendar? Just because when we add that, there's just an expectation that a final week is going to be finals week.
That would be great for the high school.
Yeah, and that's where I would think that would be more.
Our college classes, because seniors get out a little bit early, they do their finals, but there's some other things they can do that last week. But the majority of the, the staff, after the finals set, they know that it's going to happen.
So I don't know if that can be added to, through the calendar, some, some way to have, just have a finals week, whatever, whatever the, um, semesters are ending, that people just have the expectation that it's finals week, so that.
But you're not, you're not asking to add days or take a week?
No, 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 not add, no, 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 but just to designate the days so that people don't assume that those days don't count.
Sure.
That those, those days do count. And there's an actual purpose, no matter when those days can come, that, um, that that's the expectation, that's, that's finals week.
So Matt, are you looking at, like, May twenty-eighth, that's finals week then, the day after Memorial Day? Is that correct?
Whatever it would fall on.
That's what it would be.
Yes.
The last week. So just add right after the twenty-seventh, just put finals week? Do we want to say anything else?
So it's fluid, you're saying whatever, it's not, it's not set in stone right now, just like the calendar is set.
Correct.
It's not, just be whatever the last week is.
Whatever the last week, that's, it would be finals week.
It'd be trimester for one thing.
Yes, correct.
And also I think it would be the last full week, wouldn't it? Because you're talking about twenty-eighth, we come back Tuesday, and then we have, uh, early out on Wednesday, and then graduation on Thursday, Friday. So it would be the week before, but I see what you're saying, you, you're saying designate when finals will be taken in each trimester.
Correct.
Right.
So that it's, I think sometimes there's an expectation that, I'm just going to be honest, if there's a snow days,
Right.
that all of a sudden these days don't matter. And I think in my mind, they matter. And I think it just, if that's the last, then that's, that's finals week and that's when it's going to happen.
Right.
So that we just have that expectation. And our, and our students do and our staff do.
Right.
And it's not a, I just don't like the idea of saying that this is the end and then these are just add-on days.
Right.
No, this is, whenever the end is, is the end. So that's where I'm trying, if that makes sense.
And you're saying to, to designate that for each trimester, not just for the last?
Correct, I would agree with that, I think.
You're, you're using the example, because it's always a little convoluted at the end of the year.
Correct, that's a little bit more complicated.
Okay.
Can be, can be.
Right, so I think, you know, they can just add that, I don't think we have to approve when the finals week is, that's more of an administrative.
I would say the definition of finals would need to be defined for the high school, because I don't know that finals are given as you would traditionally in all classes.
Right.
Because some classes, like Fayad last day would not be a finals day, that would be turn in your locker and all those type of things. So we would have to have discussion on what a final is.
Okay, so looking at our snow day, looking at that last week of school, if we don't have any snow days, we're done the twenty-ninth of May. We have, uh, ALC on the thirtieth and KSS on the thirty-first, Friday for graduation. So we wouldn't have any school at all in June now. Now, if we, if we get our first snow day, then we're going to bring that in on the thirtieth, which is ALC graduation. And if we get two of them, we're going to just have school on the day of graduation. But that would mean that we have to move Fayad over to the other gym, because they're setting up the gold gym. Anyway, I'm just, I'm getting into the weeds here a little bit. But would we, I just mean, would we not three hour early out to Friday then, instead of doing it Wednesday? If we had two snow days, um, the thirty?
Yeah.
Right, so there's some flexibility there. So, um, and I know I've, I've talked to a couple of staff members, um, every year I say I'd really like to have, we have five, five-day weekend and, uh, over Easter, it'd be nice to make it a six-day weekend and have two or three snow days there. Then we're not, we're not doing all the snow days at the end of the year. But the feedback I get back from staff is, well, people are planning that as a vacation in the spring break and then we run into all kinds of subs and people take the personal days and it becomes more hassle than it's worth, is kind of what I'm hearing, so. Anyways, I still think it'd be more valuable to have those snow days and.
Yeah.
You sound right, but, um, let's just, I say that every year.
I say that every year too, would be better to have them built in, um, but it is, um, yeah, it's difficult.
I guess the, the part that I don't understand is, you know, the, the state minimum is a hundred and sixty-five days of student contact days, yet we're doing a hundred and seventy days and we're having a, a potential whole week of school in June. And, um, the more I've, I've talked to, to parents and staff and I, like I said in the last board meeting, is that our summers are so short as they are. And not only that, it, it, if we start going to school, if we go to school in, in June, um, there's community programs like Center for the Arts, the, the city, uh, Fergus Falls School of Dance, uh, that have typically things planned for students to not be in school, so they can start their programming in the summer. Um, and I guess, I, I don't, I would like to know why we have the extra days, for one, and maybe that's something in negotiations you talk about, but, but also, um, I just feel that the community does not want us being, going to school in June. And I'm going to vote no on the calendar, just because I don't want any school after the end of May. And I feel like the people that I've talked to, uh, I'm just going to give them a voice in this, that's all.
So we, I'm just interject here, we do it to honor the contract.
Mm-hmm, right.
And this, I, I, maybe people would find it interesting, um, but if we, if we were to add up the cost of a day providing a day of education and publicize that, so this is what the community will have paid for, that we're not going to deliver.
Sure.
And I, and you guys have heard me say how old-fashioned I am many, many times, but, um, to me, our community is paying for us to provide a great education to the kids and every one of those days, to me, is valuable. So, uh, counterpoint, I guess, on that.
And I think the other thing that comes into play is, these days, that first week of June, they are designated as our third, fourth, fifth, if the seventh is snow day. But they are designated as snow days, and so if somebody is scheduling, uh, basketball camp that week, then they shouldn't be scheduling the basketball camp for our students that week, because we do have snow days. So there's, there are, there are twelve other weeks in the summer they could have that, I get, the, the summers are short, but they're, uh, you know, we've already designated those days. And then, you know, a lot of schools, a lot of colleges get out in mid-May, but a lot of schools go into mid-June.
I just don't know why we can't make it work to have a hard stop at the end of May. And I don't, I haven't gotten a good answer from anybody and it's, you know, not that I, I just, I don't feel like my question's been answered, why can't we just figure it out and not do things the way we've always done them? And try to figure out a way to, just to hard stop at the end of May?
One of the other things is, is our staff, they're all contracted days already, so they have to continue to work also, because they have to fill their contract. So that's one of the pieces too, is that they have to come back, they have to come to work in order to fulfill their contract.
Right, and contracts can be renegotiated, you know, it doesn't have to happen all like today, you know, but I mean, just.
Well, here's, here's what it would take, Steve, is to come to that meet and confer and take a hard line with the staff. A representative from each building comes to that. And we, um, often take into account what the staff want. We want a hard stop at the end of May, then we better build in six days that can be snow days, or if there's no snow, then maybe it's a day off. But we'd have to fatten that calendar that way. No more ten-day Christmas breaks, no more, you know what?
Well, that's what I was looking at Christmas, there's a twenty-second, that's Friday, why does that have to be there?
It makes it eleven days instead of ten.
Yeah, I mean, and.
And Easter, we got three days off.
And that's exactly what I'm saying, is why can't we build it in and make, you know, those days? And I guess if I'm wrong about this, you know, you can elect somebody else, you know, but I, I feel like that, that would go very well with our community. And, um, I don't know, I guess I just, it doesn't, I, I just, I feel like we're, we're just doing what we've always done. And going to school after graduation just, has never made sense to me, you know, and I get the contract, you know, days, but like I said, contracts can be changed when it's time to renegotiate a contract.
But then that means less days and less pay for our staff too.
Right.
Doesn't necessarily have to be, I mean, it, we have, we don't have numbers, we don't have the numbers that say how, how much of a drain on, on the, um, the budget it's going to be. We don't, we don't know that. And I guess what I'm asking is just that we, we take a hard look and see if it's even possible.
Steve, also, can you take into account that we have employees here that if they don't work, they don't get paid? So we have employees in, let's say, food service, that they would be out and they're planning on that income as well?
It's another thing I find silly as well, is that if schools close, that some people don't get paid. I didn't know that until I got on the board. I mean, any other business typically will pay for, you know, people that.
Not any other business.
Well, a lot of them do.
No, I don't work, I don't get paid where I work, no. No, you don't work, you don't get money, no.
Okay.
So, um, thinking about, and the people that have those jobs, like food service and let's say our custodians or our parish, they work hard and they're counting on that income and they're not going to get that.
Well, that's my piece, I guess, for that.
All right, could I get a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school district calendar?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That, uh, the calendar motion passes. So we have a resolution on the retirement of Linda Zudini, whereas Linda Zudini began her employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in August nineteen ninety-two, and whereas Linda has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for thirty-one years, and whereas Linda has been a secondary math teacher for the school district, and now therefore it be a result of the Fergus Falls Board to thank Linda Zudini for thirty-one years of service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Could someone offer that resolution and move for adoption?
I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
And a second?
I'll second.
Can I see you, will you take roll, please?
Yes, I will take roll. Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Steven Vegasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson? Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. And then we are going to move into a closed session, um, permitted by Minnesota State Statute thirteen D point zero five, some division two, to discuss a non-public dat, to discuss non-public data, educational data, health data, medical data, welfare data, or mental health data. Could I get a motion to close our session?
So moved.
I'll second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.